Okay, good evening, everyone. We'll get started here. Welcome to the Kent City Council Committee as a whole. Today is November 7th. We're gonna get it started today. Let's start by roll call, please. Kim?
Council President Boyce.
Yeah.
Councilmember Fincher.
Here.
Councilmember Core.
Here.
Councilmember Larmour. Councilmember Michaux.
Here.
Councilmember Thomas. Councilmember Troutner.
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you. Let's move on to item number four. We'll start off with department presentation, but before that, any changes to the agenda? Pat?
Yeah, I just want to note for you that is now items A through S on the agenda. And I think you probably have the updated agenda in front of you.
A through S. Okay? Got you. Thank you.
Thanks.
Councilmember, any changes? CNN, ask for a motion for the general approval.
So move. Second.
Motion, second, in discussion. CNN, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Let the record show your name is passed. Okay, we're gonna move on to department presentation. The first one is the operation. I'm gonna ask for approval of the minutes.
So move. Second.
Got a motion, the second, in discussion. CNN, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Let the record show your name is passed. We can move on to item B, payments of the bills, motion, please.
So move. Second.
Motion, the second, in discussion. CNN, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Let the record show your name is passed. Move on to item C, statement of work, number six, contract. This is Tara Duckworth.
Hello, good evening, Council President Boyce and council members. I'm Tara Duckworth. I'm the Deputy Director of Information Technology, and tonight I'm bringing for you a motion memo to authorize the mayor to sign a statement of work. It'll be statement of work number six with Remini Street in the amount of $371,250 under the terms of the party's existing master agreement for a revised total contract amount of $1,088,905, subject to terms that are acceptable to the Information Technology Director and the city attorney. They provide support for our JDE financial systems. That support is currently provided by Robert Half, and we can save $173,000 annually by contracting with Remini Street instead.
Okay. Councilmember, any questions? Ask for a motion from Councilmember Core, please.
Chair, I move to authorize the mayor to sign the statement of work number six with Remini Street, Inc. in the amount of $371,250, under the terms of the party's existing master agreement, subject to terms acceptable to the Information Technology Director and city attorney.
Got a motion, the second, in discussion. CNN, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Let the record show your name is passed. Thank you, Tara. Move on to item number D, amendment to consultant. Brian, I know you're lucky Councilmember Thomas is not here, but...
All right. Thank you, and good evening, Council President, council members. Brian Rambunga, your PMO manager for your information technology departments. I'm here to present for authorization amendment five to our consultant services agreement with Robert Half International. The IT department seeks council approval to continue that services agreement with this agency where costs associated paid for within budgets established and authorized by council for the current biennium. City will pay consultants from Robert Half services provided through the end of 2024, December 31st, in an amount not to exceed $355,000. This not to exceed amount is a part of that $2.2 million that council had approved for IT staffing agency budget at the beginning of the biennium. Other agencies that we've set up with this agreement include ProTingent and Tech Systems, but those agreements have already extended and have been approved by council till the end of 2024. Robert Half is a yearly agreement that we look to bring forward. So with that concludes my presentation. Happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Brian. Any question for Brian, team? CNN, Councilmember Core, can I have a motion, please?
Chair, I move to authorize the mayor to sign amendment number five to the consultant services agreement with Robert Half International, Inc. in an amount not to exceed $355,000 for staffing services through December 31st, 2024, subject to final terms and conditions acceptable to the IT director and city attorney.
Motion, the second, in discussion. CNN, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Let the record show your name is passed. Thank you. Brian?
Thank you.
Item number E, settlement agreement. Elaine?
Good afternoon, Council President Boyce and council members. Elaine, we risk manager in the Risk Management Division in the HR Department. I'm here today with Facilities Manager Will Moore and Assistant City Attorney Logan Todd to present the settlement agreement between Pacific Power and the City of Kent. We are requesting that the mayor be authorized to execute this settlement agreement. In December of 2021, PPG performed an inspection on two generators here at the city hall. The following day, there was a fire that originated at one of the service generator. Puget Sound Regional Fire Authority responded and secured the incident. PPG accepted liability for the incident, and the city has been working with PPG to restore the building that houses the generator and perform the final repairs on the generator itself. So the total amount of the settlement is $108,250.82. This includes the value of the work that's been performed on the generator as well as reimbursement for the costs to perform emergency repairs and restoration to the building. There was some content lost, which PPG's attorneys Chubb assigned some depreciation to. So the total amount that will get returned to the city is $36,888.11.
Okay, good. Thank you. Any question, councilmember? Councilmember Core, can I have a motion, please?
Chair, I move to authorize the mayor to sign a settlement agreement with Pacific Power Group, subject to final terms and conditions acceptable to Human Resources Director and City Attorney.
Motion, the second, in discussion. CNN, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Let the record show your name is passed. Did I pronounce your name? Is it Elaine?
Bert.
Okay, all right. I want to make sure. Okay.
Thank you.
All right. Okay, move on to item number F, ordinance on amendment, chapter 3.70 Kent City Code. Logan, this is not Logan.
This is not Logan. This is Tammy White, your city attorney, but I did want to do a brief introduction of Logan Todd. He's been an attorney with our Civil Division for about a year. His year anniversary is actually next week, but this is the first time that he's before you. So this is Logan, and he's been helping us out with Parks Department and contracts, and so he has some slight revisions to the procurement and contracting ordinance that he wanted to present to you.
Logan, you're very lucky to get an introduction from my favorite attorney, so...
I know, right?
So I hope you feel special, okay?
So, good evening, everybody. So this has four, the ordinance has four small changes to chapter 3.70 of our code. Two, three of them are pretty substantive, ones were housekeeping. So the first amendment here would change an exception in our public works piece of that. That currently does not allow for cooperative purchasing in public works. This would then allow for us to piggyback on other agencies in a very limited capacity, wouldn't come up much. After that, we also have a change to our software agreement, so, or sorry, our software procurement. What this would do would be to allow for renewals of software to go through the mayor rather than council. You would still do the initial contract for the software service.
Okay.
And then insurance renewals. So this would change how insurance renewals work with respect to the mayor would then be, would be able to approve initial insurance renewals. They would still go to the council after the fact through the risk manager. And lastly, there's a small change to how showware center authority is codified, or to where it is codified. There's no actual change in showware center authority. We're just moving it from the procurement section to the authority section.
Okay, just housekeeping.
Yeah, exactly.
Okay. Okay, thank you, Logan. Any question, concern, and thoughts for Logan? CNN, going to ask for a motion, please. Councilmember Core.
I move to adopt ordinance number 4474, amending chapter 3.70 of the Kent City Code to allow for alternative public works procurement, to clarify showware center purchasing authority, and to delegate limited contracting authority related to insurance and software agreements to the mayor.
Second.
Motion, the second, in discussion. CNN, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Let the record show your name is passed. Logan, welcome to the team.
Thank you.
Appreciate to have you, sir. Move on to item number G, ordinance consolidation budget. Michelle Ferguson.
Good afternoon, Councilwoman Michelle Ferguson, the Financial Planning Manager, and I will be presenting the third quarter budget adjustment for 2023. This third quarter adjustment is reflecting an overall budget increase of $4,079,264. Previously approved budget expenditures increases total $1,604,160, and budget adjustments that have not been previously approved by council total $2,475,104. For the majority of this presentation, I will be using rounded numbers, but as always, the ordinance and exhibit contain the exact budget adjustments. The expenditure increases of over $1.6 million that council has previously approved include $295,000 in grants. One grant was for $250,000 from King County, which was approved by council in June of 2023 for air conditioner units for low-income seniors. The other grant was for $45,000 from the National Highway Safety Council for the three years of overtime for the Target Zero Manager. The other expenditures that council has already approved total $1.28 million, and these are for carry-forward budgets. There's $982,000 for showware capital lifecycle replacements, and $182,000 for the ECD Department's Comprehensive Plan and DSEP implementation budgets. $117,000 of that is for the Comprehensive Plan, which is going to be transferred out of the general fund and into the comp plans budget in a project. The last budget change that council has approved was for $28,000 for the Finance Department's auditor fees that council approved in June of 2023.
Michelle, can you go back? I don't, the Target Zero, can you tell me again, what is that again?
It is for three years of overtime for the Police Department to manage the Target Zero Grant.
Okay. Okay. Stacy?
Stacy and Sarah that work that group.
Okay. Thank you.
The remaining adjustments total $2.48 million. The majority of that is going to be for the courtroom renovation project, and that total budget change is $1.92 million. There's going to be a $531,000 transfer out of the Trial Court Improvement Fund and $722,000 transferred out of the Capital Resources Fund, and then the use of the $1.25 million in the project. So that totals $2.5 million, but the total budget change is for $1.92, and that is because there is a reduction of 2.291,000 for IT projects, and then the $291,000 in the IT project budget. And initially, the renovation and the IT projects were budgeted separately, and this is to move them all together into one project. So there is also, sorry, a budget change needed of $250,000 for the 2023 Comprehensive Plan that was mistakenly left off of the 2023 budget. So $125,000 is going to be transferred out of the general fund and then a use of $125,000 within the project. And then a budget change is needed for $125,000 to establish legal fee reserves within the general fund to use as needed. And then also a budget change of $80,000 is needed in the lodging tax fund to cover costs for additional grants this year. This increase in costs is covered by using a portion of the revenue replacement that the general fund contributed to the fund last year. Then a $70,000 budget change is needed for the police firing range upgrades. So it'll be a $35,000 transfer out of the Capital Resources Fund and then $35,000 use in the project. And then lastly, the budget change of $18,000 is needed to true up the CDBG budgets and $7,000 transfer to move funds into the tech plan budget. Any questions?
Hey, on the courtroom refurbishment, there wasn't no security upgrade to that?
I believe it's just renovating the four different quarters.
Renovation. Are there need for security upgrades to the courtroom? Pat? Oh, well. Is it, really?
Includes the ballistic panels in the dais, too.
Okay, all right. I'm good. Thank you. Any question, councilmember? Councilmember Core, motion, please.
Actually have a question, Council President Boyce. Michelle, how do we miss the $250,000 of the budget?
It was flagged as a one-time expense, but it was one time for three years until the project is complete. And so it was also added to the 2024 mid-biennium adjustment for $125,000.
Okay. Yeah, I just, the comment of that we missed it or mistakenly left it off, kind of like...
Yeah, it was flagged as one time instead of ongoing for the next biennium.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
Councilmember Core, please.
Chair, I move to adopt ordinance number 4475, consolidating budget adjustments between July 1st, 2023 and September 30th, 2023, reflecting an overall budget increase of $4,079,264.
Second.
Motion, the second, in discussion, team. CNN, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Let the record show your name is passed. Thank you, as always, Michelle. Okay, we're gonna move on to ordinance on amendment to capital facility. Callie, is this your first time up? No?
It's my second time, but you missed the first one.
I missed the first one? First thing, you don't call out the council president, okay? All good, Callie. All right.
Good evening, council members and council president Boyce. It's nice to meet you. My name is Callie McGrew, and I'm here with the long-range planning team in ECD, and I'm here presenting agenda items H and I. As a reminder, we held a hearing for both of these items on October 17th, and no public comments were received. These items implement the Growth Management Act by updating the Comprehensive Plan and fee codes for consistency with this year's budget. It also includes school district and fire capital facilities plans. Staff recommends approval of both of these ordinances, and if you need me to elaborate on anything else, I can do that as well.
I don't need no elaboration. You already called me out, so I'm good. Councilmember, any question, thoughts, concerns for Callie? Okay, so we got two motions. Here's the Councilmember Core, you want to do H?
Oh, I got it.
Oh, no. You have those? Please, I'm sorry.
Thank you, Council President. I move to adopt ordinance number 4476, amending the Kent Comprehensive Plan and its capital facility element to adopt the city's six-year capital improvement plan. The Regional Fire Authority's six-year capital improvement plan and the area school district's six-year capital facility plans.
Second.
Motion, the second, in discussion. CNN, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Let the record show your name is passed. Anything you want to do, aye, please?
Thank you. I move to adopt ordinance number 4477, amending chapters 12.13 and 12.15 of the Kent City Code to adjust the school and fire impact fee schedules.
Second.
Motion, the second, in discussion. CNN, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Let the record show your name is passed. How long you been with the city, Callie?
Four months.
Four months. You the first one to ever call me out, so you're not gonna get along real well, okay? Thank you. Glad to have you part of this city, too. All righty. Okay, we're gonna move on to our next economic community development, and I'm gonna turn this over to Chair Troutman.
Thank you.
Council President, we've got several items on the agenda. The first one that we are going to start with is the convey sensitive area tracks at the bridges. And I'm not, I don't have that piece pulled up, so it looks like we have Matt.
Good evening, council members and council president Boyce. It's nice to see you again.
Get on with it, Matt. Let's go.
It's been a little while. And I'm hoping there's a PowerPoint available. So if it's okay, these next three items kind of go together, and I'm hoping we can talk about those together. So so we've made a lot of progress on the bridges annexation, and I'm here tonight to talk about two kind of detail elements of that and kind of give you a preview for what's coming up at the end of the month, where there'll be some, some big moves there. So just in case, you know, it's been a little while since we talked about this. Bridges is the island of Kent that's in Auburn, south of town, down on 124th. It's about 155 acres, something. This is land the city acquired back in the 80s for a water reservoir. Once that became, it was obvious that wasn't needed, the city sold it off. It was developed over, you know, from about 2007 on, over the next several years. You know, it was developed privately, and in the meantime, Auburn had annexed around it. So it always had made sense that this become part of Auburn eventually, and we've been working on this since about 2019. The staffs and electeds have been in conversation about how to make this happen, and there've been a lot of questions. That's why it's taken a long time. We've done a lot of work with the neighborhood, done a lot of outreach, a lot of events, and a ton of questions about the infrastructure and the responsibilities Auburn would be taking on there. So we've got those resolved, and we're excited to be moving forward. So I want to cover a few of the milestone actions that the council has taken. This isn't, this isn't all-inclusive. This is just going back to 2022. Back in April, the council passed a resolution that authorized staff to move forward and explore this officially, although we'd been doing that somewhat in the background before that. In June of 2022, council authorized staff to engage with the boundary, the King County Boundary Review Board. This is the group that approves annexations. It ended up, we didn't have to file a big complicated application, but Auburn did. So that's something that we kind of worked out with the Boundary Review Board. So that, something called a notice of intention to annex has been filed with the Boundary Review Board, and right now it's being reviewed. There's a timeline there that I'll get to in a minute, but they've accepted that, and they're, they're looking at that now. In January of this year, we talked about the wetland tracks. These are sensitive areas, sensitive areas that are owned by the City of Kent, because that's the way that that was normal back in 2007 for the city to own these tracks. We have found someone to take those. Auburn didn't want to take responsibility for those, so we found a, it'll be the Homeowners Association of the Future Development. Auburn's working on zoning and things like that for that south part of the site, but those will be the responsibility of the HOA. Then in September of this year, Auburn, like I said, well, Auburn officially initiated the annexation. So the way the annexation process works is each council has to take action. One initiates and one concurs. So Auburn started that, did that initiating resolution in September. And as I said before, then they submitted to the Boundary Review Board. I'm gonna do next steps. I'm gonna talk about next steps, and then I'll talk about the two items. So the next steps for Kent will be... So the Boundary Review Board, they do the review. They open up a 45-day window during which any interested parties could come in and ask for a more detailed review. So we gave them, or Auburn, gave them a whole bunch of information about public services and about, you know, the number of lots and the property evaluations, and they kind of try to look at this from every angle to make sure that the people living in that annexation area will continue to be served with, with public services for the most part. So they're, they've opened up that window when, when any interested stakeholders, like a fire department or, you know, an RFA, for instance, could say, we'd like to look at this more carefully. That window will close on the 27th of November. So if there's no ask for a more detailed review, that will conclude the Boundary Review Board's action or review. So we've scheduled a special city council meeting for the 28th at 5 o'clock to consider the concurring resolution that basically will be this Kent City Council saying, yes, we concur and agree to the annexation. And that will be, that will kind of be, I think, about the final action for the City of Kent. So that's very exciting. So the two items that are on your agenda tonight. The first, as I mentioned, is the surplus wetland tracks. These are four tracks. They were declared surplus back in January by the city council. So now we're asking for authorization to exercise, or to, to to sign a quick claim deed where these tracks, the total about 59 acres, four different tracks, they're all protected wetlands, will be transferred to the Copper Creek Homeowners Association. And that's the Copper Creek of Auburn. There's copper creeks in various cities, so it's called Copper Creek Auburn, HOA. That's really just the property owner, is controlled by the property owner right now. But so the responsibility for maintenance of those wetlands, basically keeping junk out of the wetlands, will ultimately go to the HOA for the future residents there. So four tracks, 59 acres, like I said before, owned by Kent now. Auburn said, we don't want to take care of those. You have to find someone to take care of them. So we did, and we're, we've got those documents drafted, and this will just authorize the mayor to sign that quick claim deed when the annexation, if and when the annexation becomes effective. So the other item relates to the interlocal agreement. Interlocal agreements are standard, kind of standard practice when you have an annexation. We want to make sure that the services and the documents and... and the permitting transfer all goes smoothly. So this spells out all the specifics about what Auburn's responsibilities will be in the future and what Kent's will be. For instance, Kent is the water utility provider there. So we're keeping all of our water infrastructure and properties. However, everything else is going to Auburn. So we've worked with Auburn to develop this interlocal. Like I said, it outlines the process for annexation, who's responsible for what. Basically, they also say, we're not taking those wetland tracks, for instance. That's in there. All of, any permits that are in process, the city will continue to look at, or will continue to review. It specifies the date when police and fire service will switch over. Basically, it's sort of a continuity of government. We don't want anyone to be wondering who's, who to call, and we don't want confusion there. So that's what the interlocal does. So that's a resolution. Also, if you move on this, it'll authorize the mayor to sign that when the annexation's effective. So that's all I have for you. I'm happy to answer any questions.
All right. I know we've discussed this quite a bit. Do you have any questions from Matt on either one of these? Council president voice.
Just a comment. You know, this has really been a heavy lift, right? We go back to the COVID days, where we was meeting on the phone and all types of conversation about which way it should go. I just wanted to just do a thank you to the team, really. I mean, ECDC, they probably worked with Involve as well, too. Really just kind of seeing this all the way through, right? And it's been, like I say, a heavy lift, but at any day, I think we're doing the right thing for both sides. So just want to say kudos and thanks to the team.
And if I could take the privilege to point out Tammy White's efforts. She has been the absolute heavy lifter in drafting these documents, working with the attorneys at Auburn, and really hashing out these details. So she deserves a lot of recognition for this work.
I would say something, but I'm not. I'll leave it alone. Thank you.
Thank you, council president voice. I could agree with that as well. All right, so we will take these one at a time. The first one is for the area tracks. I move to authorize the mayor to sign a quick claim deed conveying 59.25 acres of sensitive area tracks in the Bridges neighborhood to Copper Creek Auburn Homeowners Association, subject to all existing development and use restrictions of record, upon final terms acceptable to the city attorney and the director of Economic and Community Development.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Motion passes unanimously. Next one is the interlocal agreement. I move to authorize the mayor to sign an interlocal agreement with the city of Auburn in support of Auburn's annexation of the Bridges neighborhood, subject to final terms and conditions acceptable to the city attorney and Economic and Community Development Director.
Second.
All right, a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, again, passes unanimously. Thank you, Matt. Very excited to see this finally come through.
Josh, I can ask one question, please. Matt, so right now, I think for police and fire, they call Kent, right? They dial Kent for police. So how would the citizen and people know, instead of calling it Kent, they call Auburn? What's that process?
Well, all we can do, I mean, they dial 911, and it'll get routed accordingly. We've worked with the RFA. They're supportive of this, so we're kind of leaving it to Auburn and to the RFAs to work together to make sure that gets routed appropriately.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. And so that, because that takes care of the information, so I will pass it back to you, council president.
Thank you, Chair Troutman. We're going to move on to parts. Chair, Michelle.
Thank you, council president. We have quite a few things, but they are all related. We have a bunch of grants, and Brian Higgins is going to go through them all at one time. And once he's done with his presentation, I will read each motion separately.
Okay.
All right, welcome.
Thank you. It's nice to be here. Yeah, so we're going to talk about five different grant awards tonight. The first two are for East Hill North Community Park. These are Department of Commerce grants. These are actually legislative appropriations that are administered through the Department of Commerce. So a reminder on the screen here of the finalized master plan that we wrapped up earlier this year. And so the two grants that we have for this park, the legislative appropriations, was, one was for 1.96 million, and the other one was for 970,000. And these will help pay for design and construction of the East Hill North Community Park. And then we can move on to RCO grants. So these are all RCO grants from the grant year in 2022. So this is a competitive grant program that we applied for four different grants, so we are successful in getting all of them. The first one here is for the Ruth property. So this grant totals $3 million, and so this grant assists with the acquisition costs here. And just as a reminder, we acquired this property, it was about a year ago in October, basically, about one year ago that we've had this property now. And the next one is for the Upper Mill Creek Canyon, the Mendel property acquisition. This acquisition was actually completed in 2021. And so through this program, we were able to get $475,000, basically half of the acquisition cost for this property. And then the final one is for Springwood Park. So this is a development grant. So this grant helps us pay for a portion of construction costs. And so we were able to be, to get $500,000 for this particular grant, and this is kind of the preferred master plan, concept design, but we're already at 90% design, and construction on this park is going to start early next year. So I can answer any questions on any of those, if anybody has any.
Thank you so much, Brian. Is this about four, five million?
Total? Yeah, somewhere in there. I'd have to go and add it up, but I think somebody else added it up. It was a little over five, I believe, so.
Yeah, that's a lot of money. I want to thank you and your team for putting in all this effort, and I know grant applications take a long time, so thank you. This is amazing. $5 million for our parks. It's great. Does anyone else have any questions or comments?
Who write these grants? I'm just curious.
It's very much a team effort. Myself, Carrie, who's in the audience, Terry, we all work on it together, so it's very much a team effort.
All right. Good job. It's awesome.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Okay, here we go. I move to accept grant funds in the amount of $1,960,000 from the Washington Department of Commerce for East Hill North Community Park, amend the budget, authorize expenditure of funds, and authorize the mayor to sign all necessary agreements and other documents, subject to terms and conditions acceptable to the Parks Director and City Attorney.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, motion passes. Up next, I move to accept grant funds in the amount of $970,000 from the Washington Department of Commerce for East Hill North Community Park, amend the budget, authorize expenditure of funds, and authorize the mayor to sign all necessary agreements and other documents, subject to terms and conditions acceptable to the Parks Director and City Attorney.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, any opposed? All right, motion passes. Up next, I move to accept grant funds in the amount of $3 million from the Recreation and Conservation Office for the Ruth property acquisition, amend the budget, authorize expenditure of funds, and authorize the mayor to sign all necessary agreements and other documents, subject to terms and conditions acceptable to the Parks Director and City Attorney.
Second.
All right, motion and second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Right, motion passes. I move to accept grant funds in the amount of $475,000 from the Recreation and Conservation Office for the Mendel property acquisition, amend the budget, authorize expenditure of funds, and authorize the mayor to sign all necessary agreements and other documents, subject to terms and conditions acceptable to the Parks Director and City Attorney.
Second.
All right, motion and second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, any opposed? Motion passes. Last one, everyone. All right, I move to accept grant funds in the amount of $500,000 from the Recreation and Conservation Office for the Springwood Park renovation project, amend the budget, authorize expenditure of funds, and authorize the mayor to sign all necessary agreements and other documents, subject to terms and conditions acceptable to the Parks Director and City Attorney.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you so much, Brian. All right, back to you, council president.
Thank you, Chair Michelle. The last one, I would do the last one myself. This is around public works. All right, council member Fincher, please.
Thank you, council president. We're going to hear from Sean Bauer. We're not bringing, we don't have grants, but we are keeping our water safe. So Sean, you're going to tell us about the water treatment chemicals and an agreement with Univar.
Thank you, council member Fincher, council president, and council members. Thank you for your time today. Today, I'm here with one housekeeping item for a goods and services agreement with Univar USA Incorporated to provide us with water treatment chemicals for next year, in 2024. Univar is a national company with a distribution center here in Kent. The city annually advertises for water treatment chemicals to ensure consistent cost for budget planning. The use of these chemicals is required to produce drinking water quality that meets state and federal regulations for drinking water standards. The treatment chemicals used to treat potable water, which is provided to our customers, these include sodium hydroxide, which is used to adjust the pH in the water for corrosion control, and sodium hypochlorite is used in the water supply to protect it from contamination. So with that, I have a motion to approve our water treatment chemical contract with Univar USA Incorporated in an amount of $159,588.80.
Thank you.
If you have any, let me know.
Any questions? We do this every year, but I mean, it's good stuff. After the excitement, the applause, it is good stuff. Okay. I move to authorize the mayor to sign a goods and services agreement with Univar USA Inc. in an amount not to exceed $159,588.80 for water treatment chemicals in 2024, subject to final terms and conditions acceptable to the city attorney and public works director. It's been moved and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries, and we will be purchasing the chemicals to keep our water system safe. Thank you very much, Sean. And next, we're going to hear from David Payne about our local road safety plan update.
Subject matter Chair Fincher, council president voice, council members. Good evening. David Payne, city transportation planner, presenting on the local road safety plan update, and also presenting the public engagement plan for this year's update. Picking up where we left off in September's presentation, the work is already underway for the local road safety plan update, including the elements represented on the slide. There are two components for this year's update. First is the local road safety plan, which we hope to present to council in January. And the second element is what we're calling the Target Zero Action Plans. This is one of the requirements of, or one of the goal products of the grant received from the PSRC. And backing up the local road safety plan, both the 2020 and 2022 plans were successful in receiving grant funding through the Highway Safety Improvement Program, the Wash.Bike Ped Program, Transportation Improvement Board, PSRC, and other grant programs. The second element, now the second element, the Target Zero Action Plan is the next evolution of the local road safety plan and will enable us to compete for additional Safe Streets and Roads for All implementation funding, hopefully in June. So attached to tonight's backup material, there's also a one-pager speaking to the Safe Streets and Roads for All approach that Traffic Engineer Eric Preston presented in August. So as a reminder, that is some of the language and the summary material undergirding our effort for the two components that we'll be referring back to as the plan develops. So I want to present tonight a little bit, a preview of the engagement plan for the plan update, engagement plan for the plan. So you have before you, this will include both engagement outreach, outreach and engagement for people to participate in multiple levels. When their time and interest allows, they can get in to, we have a number of opportunities to get involved. Reading down the list, also want to give a nod to our team members. Some of y'all may remember from the Transportation Master Plan. Emily Alice is in the audience, and the project manager from the consultant side, Taylor, is also in the audience, so we're happy to have them on board, helping out. So the engagement for the plan will involve and include in-person opportunities through pop-ups, meetings, and drop-ins to other meetings that are already scheduled for community-based organizations or not-for-profits. Some of our boards, we're happy to chime in with some of their scheduled events. We'll have an opportunity to engage virtually through an online map survey, which we hope to have live probably about mid-December at this point. We will be translating materials into the six languages of Spanish, Punjabi, Ukrainian, Vietnamese, Chinese, and Tagalog. That's a continuation from the Transportation Master Plan engagement. We'll also be focusing on engaging traditionally underserved populations. One of the focuses of the Safe Streets and Roads for All program does involve particular focus on underserved populations. Also, we'll be forming a Target Zero Advisory Group, an advisory group similar to what's being formed now for the Comprehensive Plan for more involvement and deeper discussions focused on the transportation safety issues in Kent. So I'll touch on that in just a moment. So we have a complex issue. We also have a complex schedule with many tasks involved. So just highlights of this, here we are in October, November, sorry, November, with, we're conducting data analysis and trends to help identify the high-risk network. We're also convening the public engagement plan. And then shortly in December, we'll be understanding or making the findings for what that high-risk corridor network or high-risk corridor identifications is. And we'll be hopefully pulling together a task force for advising on the plan and including starting the public, the online engagement. Then the next time that, shortly followed, in January, the next time that council should be seeing our efforts will be for the draft 2024 Local Road Safety Plan. So we hope to have a workshop on that 16th of January, followed just a hop, skip, and a jump later in April, hopefully, for a Target Zero Draft Action Plan, which will get us in place for a May submittal. So wanting to pause for just a moment to speak to the Target Zero Advisory Group. This is going to be a mix, we hope to be a mix of both agency representatives and residents in the same conversation, but open to participation for all. This will act as an advisory group and an oversight role over the development of the action plan over the next couple of months. So we'll be working, who should we be inviting? Who should we be extending invitations to? We're already working in with the contact list for the Race and Equity Office, the continuation of the Transportation Master Plans, the folks who are engaged in that process, the supporting agencies, agencies that wrote support letters for our action plan grant, like Puget Sound Regional Fire and the Kent Target Zero Task Force, which is also participated, the Kent Police Department is a participant in that coalition, and the Comprehensive Plan that I mentioned. So part of our ask tonight is if there are any additional groups that we think, that the council thinks we should be extending invitations to, getting the word out. We just received a word today, the graduates of the Kent 101 program. We're happy to extend invitations to that group. We got a suggestion from the Comprehensive Plan Group about the civics teachers group that's been involved in that program through Kent Independent School District, so we're happy to extend an invite to them. And this group will be involved, as the material on the slide represents, helping us to listen and learn about transportation safety in Kent, integrating the community's input and really acting as a sounding board for the community and advising on the projects, including the development of the plan. That last note, the nominations open through November 26th, that is not up to date. We're going to leave that open until through early December. We want to make sure that we're getting the word out. But we do hope to try to convene a first meeting in December, if schedules will allow. Happy to answer any questions from council members or any direction or suggestions of who we should be extending invitations to.
Okay, thank you. So we can give you suggestions, but if I happen to be in line at the store and I'm talking to someone, where can I tell them to go and apply? Or do I send them to you?
You can send them to me. You can also have them email Public Works Transportation. You can send them to me. You can also have them email publicworkstransportation@kentwa.gov. And we, part of the, wanting us to extend the, the timeline, which we're just now even opening, is we will have, and I'm so thankful that you asked that, we'll be having an engage.kent.wa website placeholder for folks who are interested to, to get a little bit more information about the project, very similar to what our comprehensive plan has. So that they, if they Google, in, in probably about a week, 10 days' time, if they Google the, the effort, they should be directed to that page that they can then submit interest to us. But we'll keep that open even, even through the convening of the group. It's, it's not a close the period of time. Once it starts up, we want folks to, to join into the conversation whenever they're able to.
Okay. In October, November was the range there for the input. How has the engagement gone so far?
We have, so the, if I can click back to that, the summary is that we've been doing the data analysis, and we are starting the public engagement plan. So tonight's presentation is really about starting to get the word out. We have not had a public engagement to date.
Okay. And even though the group, I'm sure, will have to speak English to be able to be part of the group, will this notice go out in different languages? So I may only speak Russian, but my son, who is, I want engaged in the city, speaks perfect English and would be great at that. Will it go out in other languages?
Taking a look over my shoulder at Emily Alice. My understanding is that the, the, the website that we have, the tool that, that Kent has for engagement.kent.wa does have that functionality. Yes.
Thank you. Any questions, comments? Thank you very much, and we look forward to what is to come. Did any, before he goes, were there any suggestions as to who to contact?
Not at this time.
Okay. We all know how to get in contact with you. Thank you very much. And that is the end of my report. Thank you for letting me do that, Council President.
It is my honor, Council Member Fincher. Okay. With that said, we are going to take a 10-minute break to 5 o'clock, and we're going to resume with our Kent City Council meeting at 5:00. Thank you.